Welcome to the, welcome to the thing, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, welcome to the thing, welcome to the hello hi. Welcome to the hello hi, welcome to, welcome to huh? Huh? Welcome to, welcome to hello huh? Welcome to hello huh? Hello hello, hello hello, hello huh? 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 What is, what is going on? What is going on? What is, what, what the, what the huh? Huh? What, 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 hello, hello, hi. Hello, hi, why is Twitch doubled? Why is Twitch doubled? Is Twitch still double? Twitch is still not, Twitch is not doubled, hello. Hello, hello Tayemisi, hello Venarak, hello Krish, hello Yifweed, hello uh... 1990X, hello JayCreateStuff, hello Ctrl underscore O, hello... Yes, hello, welcome, hello Kukupsi also, welcome, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello. Hello hi, hello hi, yes, speaking of JayCreateStuff. We've been, we've been talking, we've been talking before, before this went on, yes, yes, this is kind of a special thing. This is kind of a special thing, hi, yeah, we are still duplicated. We are still duplicated it seems, we are still duplicated, we gotta, we gotta end Twitch, we gotta, we gotta restart Twitch so real quick, yeah, hello, hello, hi. Hello, hello hi, welcome, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi, hello hi, what is going on on the zone? What is going on on the zone, okay, okay. Yes, hello, hello, welcome to the pod, okay, so... What is going on today? What is going on today? What is this? What, what is this? What is going on? What is this? What, what the fuck? What the fuck? Pro- prod in, prod in, 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 in... In what day is this? Saturday? Saturday? Prod in, prod in Saturday? Is this true? Is this true? What the fuck? What, what is going on? Why is prod on Saturday some may say? Why is prod going on on Saturday some may say? Well, today, today is a little bit of a special, special event. Today, a little bit, a little bit of a special event, you see, a little bit, a little bit of a special event, this is Sunday, no? I mean, it is Sunday for me Kukupsi, it is Sunday for me, but like, I don't, I think, I think, I think someone, someone is, is on the other zone. I think someone is on the other zone perhaps, I don't know, I don't know, there's, there's... It is Sunday, yeah, it is Sunday for me, it is Sunday for me, but yes, hello hi, hello hi. Yes, so... What is going on? What is going on? Who, where, where, where is this? Why am I on Saturday slash Sunday today? Today, uh, it's, it's a bit of a, bit of a special event type scenario. Bit of a special event type scenario, this is the case, this is the case. Yeah, yeah, so... I, I thought this was in Monday? I thought thi- I thought this was in Monday, but apparently it is, it is today. I thought this was in Monday, but it is today, yes, today, today, this is, this is streamer lobby. This is streamer lobby everyone, this is, this is, this is... Professional Tetris, this is professional Tetris. I don't know, I don't know, this is, this is how it is. It's, it's, it's an event. It's an event, I joined like two hours before the thing started, I, I DM'd the guy and I was like, hey, can I, can I, can I get in? Can I get in? And, and they were like, yeah, yeah, sure, whatever, yeah, sure, whatever, and so, so I'm here now. So I'm here now, this is how it is. This is how it is, hello everyone, hello everyone, I think the real event is going to start about forty hours later. About forty hours later, oh my god, this is, this is actually real. This is actually real today, okay, so hello, hello everyone, hello everyone. Yeah, so, so today, today is, 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 you know, we, we, we had something like this before, we had, we had... We had similar, we are similar crossings, similar crossings we had before, where, you know, it's, it's, it's this, it's this. What, huh? What? Oh my god, oh my god, okay, my keyboard is unplugging already? My keyboard is unplugging already? This is, this is great. This is great, okay, so we're going, we're going to have some fun situations happen today, I think. Let's not die immediately? Let's not die immediately? Okay, we didn't, we didn't die immediately. Oh, we may, we may die immediately actually. Damn, okay. We died immediately, god damn. To be fair, we... Okay, so... What is going on? What is going on today? What is going on today? Well, uh, so, so today, today... So the premise of this, of this event, the premise of this event is, is this, it's the... Hello Sky is fine by the way, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi. My voice is not... My voice is not completely there, but, but it's, it's, it's alright, it's alright, but yes. So... The premise of this event today is that, is that various distractions will happen. Various distractions will happen in, in a form of, in a form of weird pieces. In a form of weird pieces perhaps, in a, in a form of like weird, things, things may be quite different from your average video game, but you know, it's, it's, it's this kind of thing, right? It's this kind of thing. But then I thought, right, but then I thought, I, I think, I think, there, there was a, there was a game before this. There was a game before this, uh, it was, it's just, I think this is the fifth iteration of this event. And like, the, the, when, when, when I was in the game before this, I was, I was, I was also, I was also in the V-zone. Right? I was also in the V-zone, and then, and then I was like, and then I was like... What if, what if, what if I combined this? What if I combined this with the, with the, with the stream area? What if I combined this with the screen area? We can prod session, indeed, hello Kiara, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi. Hello hi, hello hi, yes, today, today is a bit of a special sesh. Today is a bit of a special sesh Kiara, today, today we are, we are on this event. Today we are on this event, and today, today, yes. So, uh, yeah, so, I, I expect there's going to be some, some new players that are, that are going to join on, on the zone. But, basically what it is, right, basically what it is, is we get everyone on the screen. Right, today, today's conceit is that we get everyone on the screen and we see how much chaos that can happen on the screen and I can still play the video game. And I can still play the video game, I mean, it's going to be a little difficult considering, considering there's, there's a lot of like pro players. There's a lot more pro players than I originally, originally thought, it's, it's, it's going to be kind of scary. It's going to be kind of scary, but, but yes, yes, this is, this is how it is. This is how it is. Let's see, let's see what the main zone is doing, let's see what the main is, let's see. Right, I see. Yeah, hello, hello, hi, okay. So, so I think the main event will begin about in an hour, about in an hour? Uh, in, in thirty minutes now, I think? Yeah, in about thirty minutes, it'll, it'll start, it'll, it'll be, it'll be cool, it'll be cool. It'll be cool, I think, I think. We, we also got a, we also got a shoutout Venarak, Venarak was also in the call with me before, before it just happened, yeah, this is, this is kind of a surprise session. This is kind of a surprise session, nobody, nobody, I mean, it was, it was a surprise session for me also. It was a surprise session for me also, because like, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what this is. I don't know what this is, like... What, what was it? Like, I thought, I thought this was on, 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 on Monday, again, again, I thought this was going to be part of our ordinary stream schedule, but apparently not. But apparently not, hello everyone by the way, hello everyone who are, who are, who are just joining in, it's, it's... Yeah, it's, it's good to see you all. It's good to see you all, we, we will, we, we, hopefully, hopefully this, this goes, this goes well. Hopefully this goes well, okay. Okay, we gotta, we gotta actually focus up now, we gotta actually focus up. Greet me with at least ten words if you're being held hostage and I should call the authorities? Hello, hello Moshka6, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. Hello hi, why does your Discord PFP change sometimes? Huggy Wuggy is sometime, green sometimes, sometimes not? Yes, this is a noted, noted Discord error, Kukupsi, this is a noted Discord error. I have this, I have this Nitro thing, right, called server-specific profile picture? And this is what it is, right, and this is what it is, it's, it's a... My, my server, my server profile picture, what the fuck? Oh, what the hell? Okay, we, we, real, real stuff is happening already. Lots of, lots of lag going on. So, Stream Sunday? Hello Mickey Nune, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. Oh my god, the lag is unbearable! The lag is unbearable it seems, oh no! Oh no, the lag is unbear- okay. The server has disconnected you, no data received for three one milliseconds, oh god. Oh god! Okay, everyone, everyone got kicked out, everyone got kicked out, that's fine, that's fine, okay. Hello Mickey Nune, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi. And hello L:Q, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi. Stream Sunday, stream reality, prod Saturday, reality, yeah, perhaps, perhaps, we are, we are on this event. We are on this event, it's the fifth iteration? It's the fifth iteration? I was, I was actually streaming, uh, when I, when I was in the, in the fourth, fourth zone? And I, I was like, damn, I gotta get on there. I gotta get on there. I, I gotta get on there. Yeah, so, so, so now, now we are here, now we are here, and everyone got kicked out? Everyone got kicked out, so we are, we are waiting, we are waiting. I think, I think, okay, okay, so, so, okay, we go, we gotta, we gotta be, we gotta square up. We gotta square up, let's, let's go graphics setting, let's go graphics setting and let's, let's put it down. Let's put some graphic settings down, where's, where's graphic? It's already in low. Okay, let's join, let's join, okay. Yeah, hu- huge, huge some may say, but yes, so, so today's conceit, I will, I will repeat this many times before the actual event starts. I will repeat this many times before the actual event starts, but today's, today's conceit is that... Is, is I have double distraction. Today's conceit is that I, I will, I will have double distraction, right? This, this, so this game mode, this streamer game mode, some, some may say, this streamer game mode, it has, it has... It has weird pieces and it has weird events that happen throughout the game, right, it throws you off. It throws you off, but, but, you know, for me, that is not enough. For me, that is not enough, it's, it's, it's this, right, it's, it's... The conceit is that, the conceit is that I, I, I do this, right, the conceit is that... What if, what if we are, we are real? What if, what if we, 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 we have, also have the screen going? What if we also have the screen going? I would, I would normally do this on a Discord stream, right? I would normally do this on a, on an after dark kind of session. But, but the, but the organizer, but the organizer wanted me to go live, so, so here we are, anyways, yeah. So, so this is what it is, right, this is what it is, we, we, we are going, we are going to screen mode, we are going to see how far I can go without... Basically seeing my screen, it'll, it'll, it'll be... It'll be quite wild, it'll be quite wild, I also write up, I also wrote up a little quick guide. As you can see, we have a quick guide for the, for the new viewers. For the new viewers who will come from different zones, I think, I don't know, I don't know, perhaps, perhaps. Yes, thank you, thank you for the little guide Mickey Nune, yes, hello, hello, okay. I, I see that, I see that people are just waiting? I see that everyone is just waiting, yes, this is, this is how it is, this is how it is. Yeah, the real event will start in about, about half an hour, about, hello Ronmu, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi. Hello hi, welcome, welcome. Yes, today, today, today we are, we are in this zone, today we are in this zone, right, this is, this is how it is. Today, today, we are, we are doing, we are doing special events, we are doing special events and we are, we are interacting on the screen. We are maximally interacting with the screen, I think, and, and seeing, seeing what'll happen. Seeing what'll happen, it's, it's, this is how it is, this is how it is. Are you saying loads of Joel good? Yeah, loads of Joel, perhaps, perhaps good, in this, in this instance, in this instance. Hello Archibald, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello hi. Oh! What the fuck? I got, I got so, wait, wait, why am I, why am I playing so much worse now? Why am I playing so much worse now? Okay, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, okay. Yes, hello, hello, welcome to the pod, yes, today, today we are a special, special session, we normally don't stream at this time. But special, special event type scenario? Special event type scenario? Okay, we gotta, we gotta down stack? We are, we are, we are, we are on the down stack duty now, okay. Okay, yes, hello, hello, okay, wait, I, I can't see the chatroom? I can't see the chatroom? I gotta see the chatroom to respond to chat messages, so I will... Whenever, whenever I get a time, I will uncover my, my, my thing, I, I will uncover my thing, please, please wait a moment, please wait a moment, I, I... I am actually, I am actually reading the screen... I am actually reading the chatroom that is on my overlay by the way, this is, this is, I mean, I mean, this is... As, as the quick guide, right, as the new quick guide has, has, has told you, it's, it's, oh, fuck, okay. Howdy y'all, howdy clown, prod distracted, post cringe? Yeah, perhaps, perhaps. Yeah, so... Hello Yifweed, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, prod didn't respond to me for three second, I can't do it, yeah, perhaps, yeah, perhaps. Yeah, this is, this is how it is, right, this is how it is, it's, it's a, it's a, it's this type of, type of scenario. There's a lot, there's a lot of good players, I, I, I didn't expect this many fucking insane players to come here, but, but the competition is fierce, I may have to turtle. I may have to go, go a little turtle style to, to survive a little longer. May, maybe this is how it is. But yes, today, today we are, we are in this zone, today, today we are... Trying to see how many Jo- how many Joels can be on the screen and I can, I can still, still do the thing. Apparently, apparently, apparently one is enough to cover the chatroom, which is kind of, kind of concerning, but yes. But yes, this is how it is, this is how it is. And, and advanced, advanced users can, can also utilize, can also utilize the, the... You know, the... Advanced users can also utilize the screen zone by the way, that are, that are on the, on the thing, that are on the thing. You may, you may be, you may be interested in, in using the screen zone, it has a lot of options. Processes crash? Processes crashed? Yeah, perhaps. Yeah, perhaps, yeah, we, we already, we already have some window spawning going on? We already have some window spawning going on? Yeah, yeah, this is, I, I assume this will be, this will be... This, this will be happening quite often, this will be happening quite often, I think, yeah, we, we are, we have B Joels? We have, we have B Joels, we have, we have, we have Joel dot E L? We have Joel dot E L? Yeah, perhaps, yeah, perhaps, wait, why, why are those Joels not appearing? Why are those Joels not appearing? Is this Joel with a space? Oh, this is Joel with a space. This is Joel with a space, I see your conceit. I see your conceit. Joel? Jo- L:Joel? Yeah, perhaps. And speaking of L:Joel, we, we, we gotta get this going, we gotta get, we gotta get this, we gotta get this going, okay. So, what is, what is, yeah. This is, this is quite wild, this is quite, this is... For, for the record, I'm not, I'm not playing right now, I, I did die before, I did die before, it's, but this is, this is wild. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of... There's a lot of like... Dangerous players on, on the lobby it seems, I, I don't know, the, the, the power levels, the power levels. I have no idea what kind of, what, what kind of fucking zone is, thing is going on in the, in the main zone, but yes. Yeah, okay, so... Uh, strategies, strategy, we gotta, we gotta think about stratagems, we gotta think about stratagems now, okay. So... A lot more attacks are happening than I initially imagined, like, I was, I was imagining things to not heat up until the top ten? But apparently people, like, half the people here are, are pretty, fairly good. Half the people here are fairly good, maybe this is because warm-up game? Maybe this is because warm-up game, right, this is, this is how it is, this is how it is perhaps? Oh, two hundred players now, two hundred players now, okay, we are, we are two hundred players now. Wait, this is, this is not the next piece, that was a fake next piece, okay. Okay, we are, we are slowly playing a little better than before, I think. Oh fuck, oh fuck, okay, complete, complete blockage. Complete blockage, okay, we died instantly, oh my god. Damn, that was, that was clutch, that was clu- okay, okay. I think, I think I would have lived if, if that happened like... Two seconds later. I think that, I think I would have lived if I, if I, if that happened two seconds later, cuz I was, I was... I was going from, going from opener to mid-game, right, where I was going to turtle a lot, so I would have known my board state a little more. Okay, where's the main ju- main zone going on? Nothing is like Tetris to remind you how bad you are at playing it? I don't know, I don't know about this, it's, we, we can, I don't know. Like normally, okay, so, so, I'm going to be honest. I got smoked, oh my god, you are, you are, you are in the lobby? You are in the lobby and you got smoked? Yeah. Like, so, so, here's a little backstory, like, right, here's a little backstory. The backstory is that, is that... Right, like, this is, this is a streamer thing, right, this is a streamer thing and, and... And like, you know, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, like, I, I do consider myself a, a, a kind of a, a kind of game player. Right, a, a sort of game player. But the conceit is that, but the conceit is that it's, it's, it's this, right, but the conceit is that it's a... You were a gamer before Vcel, it's not even this, Ctrl O, it's not even this, like... So basically what this is, is, is a, is a, is a frog and a pond type situation. It's a frog and a pond type situation, right? There's so many fucking like insane gamers in this lobby, it's kind of wild, it's kind of crazy. I expected, I expected me to get to like some places, I'm not going, I'm not, I'm probably not going to win with this like restriction ever. You know, the restrict, you know, the restriction of like, you know, having my entire gizmo going on? Right, having, I'm getting more frog and scorpion type situation? Yeah, perhaps. Perhaps, this, this may be, this may be true for like, you know, like... This may be true for not like, you know, insane, like... This is gamer of gamer type situation, this is, this is, yeah, I don't know, I don't know, this is... Korean mode? Wait, we, 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 did I, did I, did I, did I use any Korean? Did I use any Korean? Is this, is this huh? Huh? The fish is not in the pot, is in the fireplace? This was too easy, this was too easy, yeah. This was too easy, like, the problem is Mickey Nune, right, I couldn't rest. I couldn't re- like, if I was just dealing with the, with the, with this and like, you know, I'm... Like I'm mediocre, mediocre opponents? Right, if I was just dealing with my, my, my abstraction and my mediocre opponents, that would, that would be, that would be... That would be doable. That would be doable. That would be doable, but, but this, this crew is something else. This crew is kind of insane. We already have the, we already have the task manager, I see, we, we, we are, we are, we have already invoked that task manager Gambit. The task manager Gambit, yes. But yeah, so, so we will have to like try more than we normally do, I think, I think. This, this, yeah, this, this... I feel the danger, yeah, this is kind of danger, this is, this... Okay, we have, we have this is too easy, we have this is too easy's going on, okay, can we, okay? Okay? Oh! Where, where, where am I? Where am I? No, not in, not in this specific level! Oh! My entire gizmo froze, my entire gizmo froze, what the fuck? What the fuck, okay. Damn, okay. This is, this is, this is more difficult than I thought. This is more difficult than I thought, on, on account of someone can just spam... Like this is my policy, right, this, this has to do with my policy. The gizmo actually appears on your screen? Yes! Yes Moshka, this is the entire conceit. This is the entire point of this livestream. This is the entire point of our livestream, the entire point of our livestream is that I cannot see when you guys redeem this. This is, this is what it is, this is what it is, it's, it's this. It's this, Joel? Yes, Joel, perhaps. I'm not sure about this, I'm not sure about this, I don't know. I don't know, I feel, I feel like, I feel like if, if, if Chatter wants to kill me, then, then go ahead. I don't know, I feel, I feel like, I feel like if, if, if chatter wants to kill me, then, then go ahead, I think, I think. I mean, it, it fits with our, it fits with our, with our what do you call it, it fits with our with our core conceits, right, core, core message, yeah, core ethos, there we go, that's a good word. That's a good word, it, it fits with our core ethos of, of, you know, letting, letting the chat do everything. Letting the chat do everything, this is our ethos. This is our ethos, yes, perhaps, thank you for furrowing your mare of idala, Mickey Nude, yes. So, so, so this is how it is, right, so this is how it's going to be. This is how, how it's going to be, I, I, I briefly thought of changing like the opacity or something, but I think, I think this is good. I think this is good, may, maybe, maybe it should be all up in your hands. Maybe it should be all up in your hands, maybe there should be more like inter- may, maybe it should be inter, maybe there should be like inter chatter, like, you know, the conflicts going on, perhaps, may, maybe, maybe this is, this is the next evolution. Maybe this is the next evolution, I don't know. But yeah, people are slowly joining in, people are slowly joining in, and I'm assuming, I'm assuming things to be, I don't know. What the fuck? Hello Tyamisee, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello, hi. Hello, hi, welcome, welcome to, welcome to Zone. Welcome to Zone, yes. Yes, so yes, happy Saturday, happy Saturday indeed, Mickey, uh, uh, Tyamisee, yeah, there you go, Tyamisee, yeah, so today is a little bit of a, little bit of a special, special zone, Tyamisee, this is, this is how it is, this is how it is. Right, what, what is today, what is today, so, so today we, we are, we are on this little event. Today we are on this, on this event that I, that I, I thought, I thought was on Monday, but turns out it was not, so we are here now. So we are here now. My guy going wild, this is not me, this is, I'm, 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 I'm watching someone else, I'm watching people. 20 BPM Tetris? Yeah, 20 BPM Tetris, kind of, kind of, this is, this is how it is. This is how it is, so, so today's conceit is that it's, it's double distraction. Today could, today's conceit is double distraction. Right, so, so, so what, what is this, what is this? It's, it's that, it's that Beach ball style? Yeah, it's kind of beach ball style, yeah, so basically what it, what it is, right, basically what it is, is that, is that uh, to, today, the, the, the event is about, about, you know, wacky things happening to your, to your board. Today's conceit is wacky things happening to your board. And I was like, and, and this happened before, right, this happened before, and, and, and then I was like, what if we do this but, but on the gizmo? What if we do this but on the gizmo? So, so here we are, right, so here we are, here we are on the gizmo, here we are on the gizmo, doing, doing this. Doing this. And the original conceit, right, the original conceit was that was that it, it was going to be, it was going to be you know, it was going to be doable, right, I, I was going to, I will, I will have to like get my hands off the keyboard at some point, I'm going to have to like, you know, throw everything around and, and all that, but, but, you know, turns, turns out things are a little more difficult, turns out, turns out, it, it's, it's again, it's not the screen, the screen is fine, the screen can be as destructive as it wants, but like the opponents are hard. The opponents are pretty hard in this lobby, I did not account for this. I did not account for the opponents being quite ferocious in this lobby, so I, I am I am basically dying every second, it's, it's kind of funny, it's kind of funny, we will see, we'll see how far we survive this one, we'll see how far we survive this one. Yeah, so, so today, so now, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be oh, no, I don't, I don't have this piece, no, man. I thought I had the long bar, fuck, okay, I died immediately. I love how much your English is indexed on Klunki- a dialect, yeah, perhaps, yeah, perhaps, I mean, I mean, it's not, it's not this. It's not this kakuzy, it's, it's not, it's not, I did not get it from Klunk, it's, it's, it's kind of conversion evolution. Right, it's kind of conversion evolution, it's, 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 we have the same worm, yeah, we have the same worm, this is how it is. Speaking of, speaking of, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta keep this going. Our worm is an Earth's awesome worm, I know, yeah, perhaps, yeah, this is, this is exclamation mark bible, I think? This is exclamation mark bible reference, yeah, perhaps, yeah, perhaps. Hold up, we gotta, we gotta A worm that feeds us the same apple? Yeah, perhaps, this is, this, this, this may or may not be true, some people have been saying this. Some people have been saying this, but yes, it seemed Okay, there we go. That, we, we, we finally, we finally stopped the character limit here. I don't think there's a character limit, but at, if, at some point, you, at some point, the gizmo will, will refuse to accept you. At some point, the gizmo will refuse to accept you in, in some way, I don't know. I don't know, it, I, I know that it won't happen. Yes, yes, this is, this is how it is, this is how it is. But yeah, the, the, the screen holders, right, the screen holders, they are, they are powerful. They are powerful, and, and, and we will, we will have to see, we will have to make, perhaps do, do, I don't know, I don't know. I'm, I'm not going to do anything, I'm not, like, I'm not going to do anything, but perhaps, perhaps like more chatters can hop on? More chatters can hop on and, and we, we, we can maybe, we can maybe try other things. Right, we can, we can maybe go in different ways. Joel Minecraft? Yeah, Joel Minecraft, perhaps. Okay, where, where's, where's the zone? Oh, wait, I, I don't have sound on. I don't have sound on, okay, this is better. Okay, this is better, hold on, hold on, do we, do we have this? Yeah, there we go. Yes, okay. God damn, how many windows are there right now? How many windows are there? 87? Okay, that tracks, that tracks, that's not that much. Gizmo hates me already? I see, I see, the giz- the gizmo has abandoned you? The gizmo has abandoned you? This is, this is the case? Yeah, perhaps. Yeah, perhaps. Yeah, I can, I can see, I can see the gizmo hating you. I can see, I can see the, I can see the gizmo rejecting you in logs. Hold on, I gotta get my fan on, I think, I gotta get my fan on, but yes. I'm not gonna lie, right, I'm not gonna lie, this is, this is kind of wild, right, this is kind of wild, I don't, I don't know if I can like even win? I, I don't know if I, I, no, it's not about winning, but like, I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can like survive, if I don't have the distraction even. The, the guys are kind of scary, what the fuck? This is, this is, I don't know. Okay, next, next video game, next video game. Okay, what's my, what's my strategy this time? What's my strategy this time? Should I have my hand on the mouse, maybe? Should I have my hand on the mouse, maybe, perhaps, for, for, for this situation happening? Okay, the things are coming, the things are coming. The things are not coming? Wait, what? Oh, oh! What the fuck? I got 30 spikes? Did I just get 30 spiked and died? What the fuck? Wait, that wasn't even, that wasn't even like a distraction, that wasn't even like a distraction, what the fuck? How do, how do I keep getting? How do I keep getting destroyed by, by, like immediately? What is going on? Wait, is there, is this a Royale control? Six targeting you, oh my god, it is! It is, I was getting targeted by six people! I finally understand why I was dying so much, I finally understand why the lobby was so fucking scary! Yeah, it was, oh my god, oh my god, it was QP1 control, ah! Yeah, I couldn't see it because all the shit was on the screen. I couldn't see it because I was, I, I, I had all the things on, on the bottom, right, like this, oh my god, oh my god, okay, I don't, I don't die, I don't die next time. I, I just never die next, what the fuck? What the fuck, I gotta play it like Tetris 99, I gotta play it like Tetris, oh my god. Oh my god. God damn, god damn! Yeah, this is, this is how it is, this is, this is how it is, okay. Yeah, okay, so, so, yeah, the window, the window, I know, I know how to, okay. I, I gotta develop like a way, I think, I gotta develop like a way to quickly switch between wi- mouse and keyboard, so, so I can deal with the windows more effectively. Okay, let's, let's go, let's go to them for a second. Oh, I gotta, I gotta also deal with this like random freezes I get from the gizmo. Okay. No, this is, this is still slow, this is still slow, and I gotta like grab the middle part. I gotta grab the middle part, how do I do this? Oh, yeah, I can press Ctrl and then drag. Yeah, this is a tech. This is a tech, okay. Yeah, okay, okay, I, I know how to deal with this, I know how to deal with this now. I know how to deal with this now. There we go. Think it's this button? Yeah, it's this button. Alright, let's try, let's try, let's try and actually play the video game this time. Let's try and actually play the video game this time, knowing that we have 4 extra buttons that we can press. Oh shit, is the game starting? Is the main game starting? Man, I, I'm glad I learned that just in time. I'm glad I learned that just in time, because hello, hi, I think we are on, I think we are in there. I think we are in there. Okay, so what's the, what's the, what's the strategy? What's, what's our stratagem? What's our stratagem? Play for more than 10 seconds is our stratagem. And to do this, we need to, we need to get off the hot zone. We need to go off the hot zone, we, we should, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be targeted by six different people, which are, which in turn get obliterated. This, this involves targeting, this involves good targeting and, and staying low, staying low in the stat, important. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see how this goes, we'll see how this one goes. Oh, they're, they're chat, they're chatting. Okay. There we go, okay. We, we have, we have some, we have some visibility of chat. We have some visibility of chatroom. It seems like, yeah, okay, 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 okay. Seems like the game is actually starting, seems like the game is, okay, okay, okay. So what was the buttons again? Oh my god, what is this? What is this? Can we, can we see? Oh no, it's in the worst corner, it's in the worst corner, I can't see anything! I can't see anything, oh no! Oh no! Wait, it has an ignore button? It has an ignore button and, and a different button, what is this different button? It's you are already there, okay, okay, that was, that was an announcement that, that the game is about to begin, oh my god. And now our entire screen is fucked, oh, this is a, this is a bad this is a, this, yeah, okay, okay. Okay. How do, how do we, how do we, how do we get around this issue? How do we get around this issue? Oh no! Oh no, this big piece gets, keeps, oh no, fuck, okay. Okay, I guess we are doing this. Oh no. Okay, I can't see back place, no! No, I can't press this! No! Oh my god, I couldn't even press this! Why can I not grab this window? This window is bugged! This window is straight up bugged, what the fuck? Ah man, we had such a good place. We, we had everything gravity dubbed. We had everything gravity dubbed and then, and then I, then the fucking notification happened. God damn. Some, somebody say that notification happened, I don't know, I don't know, we, oh my god. We go, we gotta, I still can't... Oh, I grabbed it, I grabbed it, okay, okay, put this away. Put this away. This away. No, stop, stop grabbing task manager. Oh my god, stop grabbing task manager. Okay. Man, if anyone... Can anyone like help me out with this? Like, this is, this is not real. This, oh my god, this window is also not real? Okay, 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 it's, the hitbox is way down here. The hitbox is way down here for some reason. But yeah, I feel, I feel like we need, I feel like some, some of us, I feel like some people need to help me with this. Cause this is, this is not sustainable, it seems. Okay, how, how do I grab this one? No, not here, not you. Oh, I grabbed it, I grabbed it! Okay, okay. Okay, we are, we are, we are back. We are back into, into fighting form. We are back into fighting form, this is good. Man, that was, that was wild. That was wild. Oh, this Joel is coming back? No, not, 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 not task manager, the Joel. But the task manager comes again. There we go. Ninety windows, ninety windows! No deletes, no, nothing so far. It's, it's, it, it keeps accumulating, we, we are keep, we are, we are still accumulating. Wait, now that I, wait, now that we're here, this doesn't look too bad. Wait, this lobby doesn't look too bad, maybe we can win this. Maybe we can win this, maybe, this, this lobby doesn't look too bad. Yeah, it's just insane attack. It's just insane attack, okay. So, it's pretty much randomness. It's actually randomness, okay, this is good. This is prob, this is possibly good for us. Oh, we, we have gravity, thank you for gravity. That, that certainly makes this easy. That certainly, that certainly makes our job easy. Okay, ninety-one windows. Ninety-one windows, hitbox checks? No, hitbox is still not accurate. Hitbox is still very much not accurate. We, we have various streamer shoutout? We have various streamer shoutout? Yeah, I see, I see. Damn, that is, that is wild, that is wild. Okay, okay, we, we may be, we may be real. We may be real now. Okay, we are, we are real now, okay. There we go. Oh, it's Invis! Oh, it shows, it even shows, that, how, how kind of them. How kind of them to, to show me this. I actually have some, some practice doing Invis Tetris. Because, because I, 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 I'm playing, I'm trying to make like a rogue-like game, right? I'm playing to make like a rogue-like game and this is one of the, this is one of the modifiers that I have. Well, it's not like necessarily a modifier on the main game, but like it's, it's a story mode kind of thing. It's a story mode thing. So, so I, I, hello, hello CrazyKitty, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. I see that I cannot... I see that, I see that you cannot, uh... Wait, no! Oh, that was perhaps bad. Okay, are, are we there? We are there. Oh, I think we killed someone! I think we killed someone, that's awesome! I mean, admittedly, we are playing like pretty much normal Tetris right now. Oh, that's the insane attack, that's the insane attack, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, we are pretty much playing normal Tetris now without, without, without the screen interruptions. But it seems, it seems like, I don't know, I think, I think I can handle it now. I think I can handle it. I don't know what happened exactly. I don't know what happened exactly, but like... The lobby is not as scary anymore. The lobby is not as scary anymore, maybe, maybe it's, it's, it's... I mean, this guy is scary, but like I expect one scary guy to exist. I expect like many, like, uh, ten scary guys to exist in this lobby, so... But yeah, this is pretty much the lobby that I, that I envisioned. Maybe we can, we can do the, do the screen interruptions again. Maybe we can do the screen interruptions again. Damn, this, these guys are good at this. These are, these guys are good at this and, and it's still like very RNG, because the attack is ramped way up. The attack is ramped way up, that's crazy. Man, people are, people are stalling, yeah. Hello, Zoli3, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, okay. Okay, how do I get rid of you guys' messages? How, how do I, how do I get, get you guys' messages off me? What the fuck? Man, all the hitboxes are messed up, maybe we got, maybe we gotta, maybe we gotta return, maybe we gotta return, okay. Hello, Hellpie, okay, hold on. Wait, where was I? Hello, hello, uh, hello... Hello, SaladForest, that first, okay. Hello, SaladForest, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. Hello, Zoli3, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. And hello, Hellpie, welcome to the, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. Let's, let's start with this guy, okay, but, but yeah, so today... We don't, we don't normally do this. We don't normally do this, but, but hello, we are, we are Saturday style. We are Saturday style and, and today, today we are, we are here. Today, today we are doing this event thing. Today we are doing the event thing. It's, 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 it's interesting, it's interesting. So, what today is, is, is today, it's, it's double distraction. Right? It's double distraction, we are distracted double style. Oh my god, this big messages, thi- this big, specific big message is, is very distracting. Okay. I under, I understand the conceit of to this one now. Okay, we go, we go, okay, we have, we have that skip. That lag? Oh no. Not that one. Okay, we gotta, we gotta think about this in mind. Hi, hello, hello Wolfplay013, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, oh, fuck, okay. We gotta be more careful dropping pieces here. That's, that's fine. Okay, that one is. That one is. That clears the whole thing, very good. We can place that here. Oh! Why, why does it keep sliding? Maybe this is a effect of lag. Okay, I, I have a, I have a big piece in hold. Okay, we, we are, we are slowly going down here. We are slowly going down, this is good. Oh, we killed someone. Oh, we are going to be killed. Hello, RicardoStriker, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello, hi. Hello, hi, welcome, welcome to, welcome to Za, welcome to Ja, welcome to Zone, welcome to, welcome to, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, hello. Hello, hi, what, what is that mode? What is that mode? Yeah, hello, welcome raiders, hello Goldift7773, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. Yeah, so today, today we are on the event. Today we are on the event. What happened with the screen? Yes, that is the conceit here, Goldift7773. This is how it is, this is how it is, so, uh, uh, yes, so this is our overlay. This is our overlay, it's the screen, right? It's the screen zone, it's the screen zone and on the screen it says, it says prod.kr/quickguide. prod.kr/quickguide, this is how it is. This is how it is and, and this is, this is what it is, right? This is the thing. The screen is very clean, yeah, it is very clean. Uh, today, what we are doing is, is double, double distraction. Today we are double distraction, we are, we are... Kind of, kind of... We are, we are being distracted by two things at once. Well, the, the, the game mode, right? Obviously, the game mode is kind of scuffed. And the screen, and the screen, you guys, you guys, yes, yes, this is how it is. This is how it is, I, I'm... I don't think I can like realistically win this, so this is the next mistake, right? We, we, I, I, at least we gotta be at least funny. We gotta be at least funny, I think. Yes, so, so, so this is how it is. This is how it is, hello everyone, by the way, hello everyone. PetBeats, yeah, yeah, we, we are, we are logging in already, we are logging, we are screen zone, yeah, screen access. Screen access, yeah, perhaps, perhaps. I see you're having fun today, yeah, we are, we are, we are on the event, uh, RicardoStriker, this is a special session. This is a special session, we don't normally do this in, in Saturday. Thank you for summoning little guy, SaladForest, thank you, thank you. Okay, let's see what this... Uh, if, this one's... Oh, it's this! Yeah, we can, we can deal with this. We can deal with this. What is happening? Hello! Hello, Professor underscore NJ, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello, hi. Hello. Yes, today we are on this event, today we are on this event. Hello, Vettel, hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod, hello, hi. Yeah, today we are on the Tetris event, it's, 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 it's super streamer lobby, it's, it's streamer lobby, this, this is, this is how it is. This is how it is, this is, this is, I, I, yes, this is... Unusual, unusual prod stream today, uh, it's, it's, we, we, we are, we are on here and, and what it is, right? What, what the conceit of today's stream is, it's, it's... Today it's, it's a, it's a, you know, you, you, you guys can access this, yeah, you guys can access the screen and do this. Thank you for song, CrazyKitty, by the way. Okay, let's not, let's not do this, let's, let's actually build down. Oh! No, that's not how the spin works. That might have fucked me, like deeply. That may have fucked me deeply, oh no. Oh no! Okay, I gotta be real, I gotta, I gotta be real, I gotta, I gotta focus up. I gotta focus up. Okay, I killed one guy. Okay, I'm, 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 I'm going back down, I'm going back down, as I, as I hoped. As I hoped, I'm going back down. I snuck a T-spin in there? I stuck another T-spin in there? Wait, I'm going crazy? Oh no, I, 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 I... I, I placed wrong places? No. Okay, okay, I think we got it down again, I think we got it down again? This is, this is good, maybe? This is good, maybe? We killed another person? We killed another person? Wait, we are actually going far today. We are actually going far this game. This game may be, this game may be for us. This game may be for, this, this may be our game. Whoa! Whoa! Wait, hold on, are we winning? Are we winning this? Oh, wait, no! My gizmo crashed! My gizmo, my gizmo, no! What do you mean, my gizmo crashed? What did you guys do? What did you guys fucking do? Oh my god! Oh my god! Man, we were winning this, we were winning this and then, and then the gizmo crashed. Coding fail, coding fail, honestly, what the fuck? Man, the, the, what, what, what happened here? What happened here? Collection was modified, enumeration operation may not execute. How gauche. How gauche, it's the race condition, it's the race condition. God damn. Ah, anyways, anyways. Yes, so, so this is how it is today, this is how it is, thank you, thank you. LunchlyGodme? LunchlyGodme, is this true? Is this true? We, we got, we got, we got god by mercury poisoning? I mean, allegedly? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, hello, hello, welcome, welcome people, oh my god. Man, we were doing so good, we were doing so good and then we fucking died, because, because the gizmo crashed, that's so sad. That's so sad, oh no! But yeah, this, this does show, right? This does show that we can definitely win this. This, this does show that we can definitely like, I, I don't know about winning, but we can get to like top ten. Yes, we can definitely, we can definitely do this. Yo, okay, yeah, it's kind of yo, it's kind of yo, hello, hi. Hello, hi, I, I'm assuming you just found out how this works? I'm assuming you just found out how this works? Yes, this is how it is, this is how it is. I mean, you, you, this is your desktop. This is your desktop now and the conceit? And the conceit is that what you're seeing on the screen, what you're seeing on the screen Wolfplay13, this is what I'm seeing. What you're seeing is what I'm seeing, right? This is, this is how it is. This is how it is. Okay, the, the windows are multiplying, the windows are starting to multiply more, okay, how many windows are there right now? 111, pretty good. Oh, this is giant! How do you send lines in this? Wait, how do you send lines in this? I mean, I can survive, but like, how do you send? Oh, all clear, all clear is how you send lines, okay. Okay, we can do this. I have, I have, I have found quote-unquote the meta, I think. Okay, so how do, how do we, how do we do this, how do we execute? No, we cannot execute now. Oh, no! No, bro, no, okay. Okay, we still got it, we still got there. Wait, how do we not kill anybody right now? We, we are sending so many lines, how, how are these, how, how is everyone still alive? Okay? Okay? I think holding on to a two-piece is pretty good. Yeah, it's, it is admittedly pretty good. Oh no! Okay, the Joel starts to pile in, now, now that we are, we, this is, this is how I, I was envisioning it, this is how I envisioned the thing to play out, yes. Yes! Okay, okay, we, our, our, our original purpose is being restored, I am being. Kind of okay at the game now, okay, this is good. This is good. Unfortunately, I cannot, I can no longer see the next bar, which is a huge disadvantage, because, oh no! Okay, we gotta, we gotta keep this up, oh! I died immediately, I died immediately, whatever, oh my god. The Joel's got me, the Joel's got me, okay, this is good. This is good, test ease? Ease, we have ease zone? We have ease zone, yes, you can also help me, Wolfplay, this is how it is, you can, you can disturb, or you can, you can clear clarity, you can, you can. Cast clarity on me. This is cool though, this is cool though. Yeah, the lack of like next boxes in this mode is, is pretty critical. Yeah, no problem, thank you, yeah. The, 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 uh, the next boxes is kind of critical, because you want to do perfect clears, yeah, you want to do all clears, right? You heard of ease, but get ready for, what? What, what is this, what, what, huh? Huh? What, what is this about, Moschka, what, what, huh? What do the numbers mean next to the actions, by the way? Oh, yeah, those are, those are, it's, 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 it's. It's paid actions, right, it's, it's, it's actions that has a cost in it, right, it's, it's. It's, it's, you, you gotta, it's tribute summon, yeah, it's tribute summon, exactly. Yes, it's tri, it's tribute summon, it, it, it exists because, because there was one time. It exists because there was one time where, where, where it was, it was used quite overly, and, and it, it now has like a cost component to it. How do I get currency then? Oh, you already probably have a lot of currency. You probably have a lot of currency, it's, it, you, you, you talk once, you should get like a weekly thing? You should get like a weekly thing, but, but yeah, it's, it's, it's just like existing, it's just like existing kind of deal, thank you for. Thank you for clarity, Moschka, it's, it's very good, it's very good. I see, I see that, yeah, I do have 5, 50k, yes, yes, this is how it is. This is how it is. It's pretty cool, right, it's, it's, I don't know. When are you coming over? When are you, what, what, what is this? What is this? Joel, yes, Joel indeed, Joel indeed. We'll see how, we'll see when the, when the task manager pops up again, is, that'll, that'll be pretty cool. Okay. It's the same. When are you leaving Korea for the West? Ah! Yeah, that'll be, I think, I think it'll be in, in like a. Hmm, I don't know. Okay, let's not die immediately. Oh, you're trying to hide my hold boxes, oh, oh, that was a good one, that was a good one. That was a good one, but, but we, we got there, but we got there. Moschka is following their idle dream, yes, that still happens, that still happens. Okay, okay, oh, we, we got, we got this again? Oh, this is, this is difficult now. Oh, we might be dead here, we might be dead here. Okay, are we, are we, are we good, are we good now? Thank you, thank you for, thank you for clarity, uh. Man, that was, that was. That, that was, oh my god, okay, okay, we are, we are slowly creeping up again? Wait, why isn't this exploding? Oh, we died, okay. Damn, that was crazy, okay? Oh, it was, it was hiding like the first row specifically, so that I couldn't see the first row, that's clever. That's clever. But yeah, uh, whenever I, whenever I leaving Korea for the, for the zone, uh. I don't know, probably somewhere, somewhere in next week, uh, not next week, I mean, some, next year, there we go, somewhere within next year. Somewhere within next year would be it. Are you gonna come to Toronto? I don't know. I, I haven't decided, like, it, it, it depends, right, it depends on, on where I, I am, I am needed. It depends on where I am needed. What is your favorite C level? What? 65? Is there anywhere you would like to be needed? I mean, I would like to be needed in game making, like ideally, ideal, that is, that is my ideal, right, I, I gotta be, I gotta be needed in game making, I think. It doesn't matter, like, like, I will, I will starve, I will starve to work in game making. If you do, I will take you out for some sundubu, ah, ah! Yes, I, I noticed, I noticed, this is a Korea thing, this is a Korea thing. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we can, we can go out, right, we can go out, that, that's, that's, that's independent of going there or not, I think. I, I am, I am pretty, I am, like, I, I am going to be pretty like, you know. Travel free? So, so it'll be, it'll be fine, I think. Montreal, Vancouver, Seattle, Cali are all gaming hubs? Yes, I, I know this very much. I, I am, I am very well aware of this, I will, I will, I will see what, what, what happens. I will see where the wind takes me, I think. Toronto has some studios too? Yes, yes, this is, this is how it is. Ubi stuff in particular, and some indie ones? Yeah, I mean, the thing is, right, the thing is, I, I don't, I don't know, like, I do. Like, I, I surely, hmm. Hold on, okay, okay. The, the background, the background music was kind of taking my, taking my attention span, but yeah, so. I don't really, I don't know, like. I don't know, exactly, exactly. I mean, beggars can't be choosers, but, but I am, I am interested in, I am interested in like smaller studios, I think. Like, this is what I mean by this, right, this is what I mean by I will start to make video games. I don't, I don't particularly, I don't particularly need a lot of money to like sustain myself, so I will, I will, I will. You know, I will, I will choose this, like, you know, ch- choose to work harder for less, if, if it means I get to make cool game. Toronto, Vancouver, and Cali, you need money to survive? Yes, this is also true, right, you, you have rent prices? You have rent pr- prices, Montreal is more affordable, but then French, I mean, I'm, I'm, I can French. I, I, I'm, I'm fine with languages, I'm fine with like. But I'm, but I'm assuming this is not what you're, you're referring to, right, it's, it's not about the languages, it's about, it's about the France. It's about the France. I don't know, who, who knows? Who knows? Quebecois attitude towards non-French speakers can be not so great, as Quebec increases language laws? Ah! Wait, what do you mean language laws? What, what, what is this language law? I don't understand the history of it, to get a badge, you need to be streaming? I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't particularly care about badges, Ricardo Strikey. I don't particularly care about badges, Ricardo Strikey, the, the, what, the, the whole reason why I'm here. The whole reason why I'm here is because I had a cool idea. I had a cool idea, that is, that is this, right, I, I had a cool idea, which is double distraction? Double distraction, and I wanted to do this. Companies need to have French signs now, even, and then laws that promote French speakers? I see. I see, it's, it's this way, it's this way. That, I, I didn't notice, I didn't notice, this is, this is interesting, by, by the way, Vettel, this is interesting, I will, I will definitely consider. I will definitely consider, I heard French? Yeah, we were talking about Montreal, actually, Benar. We were talking about Montreal. It's, 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 well, well, and that and just generally, that and just generally, thing, things in related, things related to. Okay, okay, we gotta, we gotta turn music back on? No, you're not, you're not gonna get me, you're not gonna get me with that one, by the way, we have a new volume command now? By the way, you have a new volume command now, you can, you can use volume zero to meet the gizmo, and vol- you can volume like 1.5. I think volume 0.5 gets us to 50% volume, yeah, that's how it works. Yeah, you're not gonna get me with that one, what, what? Tetris takes priority over weird sounds, unfortunately. Unfortunately, that one doesn't get me. Montreal the city, yeah, Montreal the city, it's, it's like, we, we were talking, we were talking about gaming hubs around the world. Okay, we gotta, we gotta be aware, we gotta be aware of sudden event. We gotta be aware of sudden, uh, what do you call it, sudden. Oh no, oh no! Okay, that, that was bad, that was bad, can somebody, can somebody gravity or something? Can somebody have gravity or something? I cannot see anything, I cannot see anything! Oh no, oh no! Oh no, okay. Oh no, it's, it's, it's the task manager, it's the task manager! I'm stalling, I'm stalling? Ha, I died, okay. I stalled this for a while though, I stalled for a while though. Who is doing this? I don't know. Prob- probably someone, I don't know, probably someone like Moschka, probably, I don't know. It's, it's either Moschka or, or Mickey, but yeah. Bad people? No, this is good, this is good, this is the conceit. It's the double distraction. It's the double distraction, right, it's, it's, it's. We, we gotta, we gotta be, we gotta, I gotta, I gotta battle both the ga- what the game throws at me, and, and the, and the. what the game throws at me and this. Right, and this. I was trying to cover up the danger bar, but your input box was in the way? But your input box was in the way? I don't know about this. I don't know about this, Moschka. I mean, you can manually make input boxes, right? You can type coordinates? You can type coordinates? Welcome to the con? Hello, welcome, welcome, welcome to ABC123. Welcome to the podcast, welcome to the pod. Hello, hi, hello, hi, welcome. Yes, welcome to a little bit of a special session today. Today, a little bit of a special session. We do this. We do this today. But yeah, I don't know. Maybe the spawning windows gimmick, we used that a few times? Maybe we do something else? Maybe we do something else? Because like, most of the, I feel like most of the distractions have been spawning windows-based. It has been spawning windows-based. Maybe this is, maybe we need to get other methods? Maybe we need to give other methods some love also? Maybe we need to give other methods some love also, perhaps? Are they actually windows? They are actually windows. Fan? Yeah, fan is good. Fan is good. Or just overlays? Oh, yeah, it is just an overlay. It is just an overlay, but I see it. But I see it. Okay, let's see. Let's see what I can do with this. I can do this. Yeah, we can evacuate on this zone. Oh, this is five wide. Fans are permanent? No, fans are not permanent, Moschka says. Fans can be killed. One, fans can be killed. And two, fans, they can be fling. Yeah, they can be flung. But it turns out flinging a lot of fans, they cause lag. They cause lag on my system, it seems. Okay. We're back on this zone. Why did I not do that sooner? Why did I not utilize this sooner? That was good. Yeah, we are five now. We are five in the zone, by the way. Okay, we're starting to get a little more this. Okay, we're starting to get a little more attack than before. Oh no. Okay, 72 attack! Just did 72 attack on the guy. That was pretty good. Oh no. That, okay, okay, the attack was ramping up. We did 73 attack? We did 73 attack? That was pretty good. That was pretty good. I think that round was kind of a W. I think that round was kind of a W. Maybe, okay, so here's another conceit. Here's a, wow, what was that lag? What was that lag? What just happened there? Okay, let's, wait, why is the VTuber chat all talking? Let's see what's going on there.
Okay, with this garbage, I guess you could just, like, tank it all and just combo.
People are talking?
Yeah.
Damn, people are talking, it seems.
Honestly, comboing is probably the better option. Because then you don't have to deal with the two wide.
Yeah. Embrace your inner A rank.
Hello, hello, you VTuber?
VTuber and me.
Oh, we're doing this, okay. Hello, hello, hi. Okay, do we... Yeah, it seems like people are doing... Okay, it seems like people are doing some strategizing. People are doing some strategizing on the chatroom, it seems. Kind of weird. Yeah, this rule set, it's kind of weird. This rule set is kind of weird. I don't know. Man, there's good people out there. People are racked out there, okay. I'm assuming this is one of the less... Yeah, I'm assuming this makes sense, because it's one of the less weird game modes. Wow, what is this? Oh, we got another alert that are of the same, okay. They be flying? They be flying? They be flying, indeed, indeed. Okay, I kind of know the conceit of this one, I think. Yeah, it's this one. Yeah, it's this one, actually. I cannot kill the fans? Wait, you cannot kill the fans? Is this true? You cannot, can you not kill the fans? Wait, if you can't kill the fans, that's a little bit of a trouble. That's a little bit of a problem. I think. It is? Oh, my game crashed. My game is not doing so good. What is going on with my game? What just happened there? What the fuck? Why did my game, why did my entire game just lag? What happened there? Is it because of these two, like, white blocks that are on here? Oh my god, they are unkillable! Why are they unkillable? What the fuck? Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is a good time to investigate. This is a good time to investigate. We have investigation going on. These white blocks are many fans. Yes, indeed, indeed, they are many fans. But why can't I delete them? Why can't I delete them? They should be able to be deleted. I can't kill them, so they are just overlapping? How weird, how weird. Why can I not kill them? Self-destruct, yeah. Not immortal. Is immortal true? Immortal is false. Can I not kill pinned entities, perhaps? I was able to, but then, but not anymore? They're super fans? This is disturbing. This is disturbing. Wants to kill their fans? What, are they a psychopath? Yeah, perhaps. Oh, is it because I didn't call base here? Okay, let's see if this one works. Okay. Okay, are we real? Wait, wait, hold on, are we real now? Are we real now? Can we delete the fans? Uh... Can we delete the fans? No, we cannot, we cannot delete the fans, it seems. We still cannot delete the fans. I love the bowling alley game graphics for this game modes. Yeah, they are pretty good. They're pretty good. But yeah, why are they not killable? Oh, it's going again? It's going again, okay. Okay, it's different colors. We can cope with this. Oh, is the bat disturbed too? That's a little bit of a, more, a little more of a concern. Which would make sense, which would, I mean... If you know the bat, you would be able to cheese this pretty heavily, so... We're doing surprisingly well. Yeah, considering I'm not playing my best? Like, I'm doing surprisingly well for... That is weird. This feels weird. Wait, four targeting me? We gotta hop off this. We gotta hop off this. How do we hop off this? Five targeting me? No, 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 no. We gotta go to, we gotta go to... Nine targeting me? Wait, wait, what? Four, okay, okay, we're back to four. We're back to four. That was scary. That was scary, okay. Okay, I don't know what happened there, but that was not good. That was not good. Man, we don't have next boxes again? Wait, wait, why do we have nine targeting me again? No! Why do we keep having, like, so many goddamn people targeting me? So many goddamn people targeting me? I don't think we're doing this right. Getting rolled? It's, I don't know, like... I don't know what I'm supposed to do in terms of, like, the targeting. In terms of targeting. I gotta go to something else. I gotta go to something else to not get targeted as much. Like, I've been pressing these messages... Oh, no, 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 wait, no. I pinned the wrong message again? Fuck, we gotta go back there? We gotta go back there? Okay. That was a... But yeah, like, this is, I don't know. It's kind of wild. It's kind of weird. Also, the lack of next boxes is pretty critical, it seems. Which makes sense. Because we already don't have the information with the, you know... Wait, okay. Before the next round starts, let's do a little poll. Let's do a little... Should we keep the windows? Should we keep the windows? Because like, the windows is cool. The windows is cool for me, but like, we had this happen many times now. We had this happen many times now, so maybe we switch it up? Should we do a little switch-it-up situation? What do you mean by keeping the windows? I mean like these, right? I mean like these. Like the... Wait, I can't even grab them, so like, you know, this, this. Oh, is my overlay just straight up not here? Oh, there we go. Yeah, people, it's on the right zone, right? It's on the right zone. Oh, what the fuck is this? Oh, we can do this. I've played Tetris Effect before. But what the fuck is this? Even the point event? For me, nothing works? Try refreshing, Ricardo Striki. Now? Oh, does it work now? That's good. What the hell am I supposed to do with this? That specific piece seems very odd. I don't know how to utilize that P swell right now. And it's leading me to quite, quite a trouble, I think. Yeah, that piece is so weird. What do people do with this? Oh, they don't even do this, okay. But yeah, so, so... What I mean by this is, oh, by the way, okay, my, my cursor is also widely offset again? But yeah, so, so it's, it's, it's the, it's the windows, right? It's the... It's the window redeem. Right? It's the window redeem, which is like, I mean, I mean, it's cool. It's cool, but, but yeah, we, we had, we had multiple distractions by the window redeem now. Right? We will keep it if you guys want to, but, I don't know, it's, it's, it's... But, but it's, it's, it's this, right? It's, it's, what if we... Set a maximum limit? I don't know. Cause like, it's the same people anyways, right? Cause... The people who will redeem those anyways, they, they have done it multiple times already, so it's like... Either you go infinite, or either you go, you go no, I think. Or maybe, maybe, hold on, we, we enable this. Wait, hold on, maybe we enable this? Maximum letters? No, I don't, I don't know, can, can we do this? Can we do this? But the problem, I mean, the problem is in maximum letters also though, cause like... You can, you can just spam? You can just spam? You can just get, get the Munchka auto clicker? But yeah, hold on, I think I know, I think I know the way. I think I know the, the path. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, what if I do this? What if I apply the draw window? Yeah, there we go. There we go, so this is the, so this is what happens if you redeem draw window right now. Right? This is what happens when you redeem draw window right now, if you go to screen zone. If you go to a screen zone? And, oh... Oh yeah, this one, this one got locked out, okay. But yeah, like, it's, it's, if you, if you go to, if you go to here, and if you do draw window like this, this is how it is, right? This is how it is. And, and then you can draw on this, and... Right? So you should be able to achieve the same effect by spamming the thing. Oh! The, the, the game is gone? What aborted means? I don't know, I've never seen this. I've never seen that one, what the fuck? What was that? You win? I, I won? Goddamn. Okay, we, we can, we can do this, we can do this. I, I've done 20G multiple times. I've done tw- oh, we, we gotta, we gotta go to random, I think? I think random saved me earlier? Yeah, random saves me. Random saves me, I think. I think, I think random puts me off the heat. To some degree. Okay, I think we are finally understanding how to play Tetris 99 again, which is kind of wild. Which is kind of wild. I, I did play Tetris 99 before, it's, it's, it's not a new game mode, I just forgot everything about it, it seems. I can't play it maximum gravity? This event is too hard? This event is a little bit hard, yeah, it, it seems like it's geared towards enthusiasts. Right? It's, it seems like the event is geared more towards enthusiasts than it is towards like, you know, casual players. It's, it's, and some may, some may say it's a bit of a freak event. Some may say it's a bit of a freak event, perhaps. Why would people target me right now? What the fuck? Wait! The lock speed gets faster? No, the lock speed gets faster? No! I did not notice. I did not know this would happen. Oh, fuck. Ten targeting you? Yeah, I guess, I guess that's fair, that's from Elims? That's from Elims? Yeah, everyone is struggling. Everyone is struggling, because that's fucked up! That's fucked up! You can't just increase the lock speed without telling me, fuck! Bro just went shirase on me. Yeah, people are dying. People, every, everyone is dying. Everyone is dying, it seems, okay. Man, this, these guys are good. Yeah, these guys are actual, actual players. What the hell? Yeah, yeah, this is, this is just TGM stuff. This is, this is normal. People, they're, people are freaks. People are freaks out there. Damn! What rank am I? Yeah, where am I? Ooh, 152. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. You can't, you can't do better than 152? Hello, Machiavelli in Alloy. Hello, welcome to the pod, welcome to the broadcast, welcome to the pod. Hello, hi, hello, hi. I mean... I could probably do better than 152 if I, if I was participating as a viewer, but unfortunately, there's, there's complications. Right? There's complications. Yeah, okay. Oh, it's, it starts at the... Right, it starts there, okay, that makes sense. Okay. Hmm, okay, so where, where, where are we? Where are we right now? We should be on, we should, we can probably be on Elims. Ten targeting me? Yeah, maybe not, maybe not, actually. Oh! No! Oh, how many was targeting me? Six? Goddamn. I'm so bad? No, it's, it's fine, it's fine. This is a weird game mode. This is a weird game mode, it's, it's, it's... It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be hard, right? It's supposed to be weird and, and you're supposed to die early. I still, I don't know how to like, do the, do the Tetris 99 thing though, like, guys, man, and... Is, is everyone getting targeted by six people? Is everyone getting targeted? Like, is everyone... Am I doing something wrong? Cause I, I feel like if I understand the Tetris 99 thing, maybe, maybe I can do better. Cause I don't feel like I'm that, like, worse than the people that are much ahead. I feel like those people are just not getting as mid, attacked as much. Wait, did I... Oh, I didn't enable the sounds, I see. That's, that was my folly. That was my folly, yes, something was wrong. Hmm, okay. Okay, okay. I think, I think I gotta figure this out before, before the game ends. I gotta figure, I gotta figure... The Tetris, like, this, this meta game out. Oh! Oh, I see, I see that thought it is. Yeah, this is the... Oh! Okay, yeah, that's, that's how it, that's how it works. Okay, we, we, we understand the conceit of the game now. There we go. Yeah, I under- we understand the conceit now. Oh! Okay, that's fine. There we go. Yeah, I think, I think... I can't believe that Tetris 3 is free after this many updates. Yeah, it's, it's, it's kinda wild, right? It's kinda wild. Open source is good, perhaps. Perhaps the conceit is that open source is, is good. Oh, I, I, I got, I, I died, okay. I couldn't react fast enough? Yeah, I think, I think the conce- I feel like I could have gotten higher if I didn't die the first time due to stupid mistakes. I didn't, I didn't understand the game modes, though. Yeah, I understand what the game mode is asking me to do now, cause, that's, that's cool. This is a cool game mode. Oh, that's a cool tactic. That's a cool tactic. Yeah, that was like, what I initially was going to do, but then I missed drops. And then I lost everything. Huh. Can you, like, determine which side of the... Can you, like, force a certain piece, like, certain hole to be open? Like, is that what it is? That sounds powerful. That sounds like a... That sounds like a crazy strategy if you know how to do it. Yeah, it seems like... It seems like the thing only comes from this zone, which is interesting. Oh, does it have to do with, like, connected? Does it have to do with, like, consecutive? Is that what it is? Oh, that's cool, if true. Okay, true. Okay. This one? Oh, yeah. Yeah, people are fast. This is a 3pps user. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, how do you only get garbage from one side? Okay, okay, finally, it's swapped. Finally, the garbage swapped. I see. Okay, I think I understand. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't... I think I understood something that I previously did not. I don't think this is normal 7-wide. I don't think it's... Yeah. We'll see. We'll see. 4 targeting me? Wait, what? I died immediately? Okay, I gotta know what's going on with this. Is even bad? Is that what it is? Oh, is everyone on payback? Is that what it is? Oh, that could be what it is. Okay, so I think I gotta go D? I think I gotta... Joel? Yes, Joel and D. Joel and D. Let's see if that one works. 4 targeting me? Wait, wait. How do I... How do I get out of 4 targeting me zone? How do I get out of 4 targeting me zone? I don't want to fight. No, man. I think I understand how to use this piece a little bit. Yeah. Yeah, this piece is way more manageable than the other one. Okay, we're back to 1 targeting me area. This is pretty good. F? Oh, did you perish? Unfortunate. I... Oh! Yeah, I will soon perish as well, probably, it seems. Wow, did that weird piece... Did that weird piece just save me? Did that happen? That is awesome. Wait, how many guys am I killing right now? What the fuck? I'm getting lucked into all these, like, fucking frags? That is crazy. I did not... I don't deserve to be doing this good, honestly. My gameplay is trash right now? Like, why am I still alive? Thank you. Okay. My gameplay was so bad. My gameplay was so bad. I could have done so much better. I could have done so much better. I did not do any downstab. What the fuck? Okay, so... Yeah, I think this is how you... I think payback is how you roll. I think payback is how you do the... Do the, like, Tetris 99 thing here. Okay, I understand everything. I understand everything. You gotta go D immediately. That's a funny spin. Wait, what rank are we? What rank are we? Oh! 49. We're top 50. We're top 50 on here. We're top 50. Okay. Okay. Final game, I think. Final game. Yeah, people are saying final game. Okay. Yeah, this was cool. This was cool. I don't know. It was... I don't know. D? Wait, wait. What is going on? What is the D column? Oh, yeah. Why isn't the game starting? I think the image is missing? Wait, is that what it is? Oh my. Oh my. Kind of messed up, if true. Let's see what the VTuber chat is doing. Hello, everyone. Hello, hi. Hello, hi. What is going on here?
How you doing?
Yeah, I'm doing great. I'm doing great. I did not particularly perform well, but I think I performed fairly well considering what's on... Oh my god, thing is starting? What is going on? Wait, we're doing squares again? We're doing squares again?
It's putting squares again. What? I'm confused.
No, I think this might be a mistake.
Yeah, it's only been half an hour left still.
We're gonna get jumpscared by something dumb.
Let's go. Parenthesis spin single. Oh, I think I know how to spin them in now.
Oh, bombs!
Okay.
Oh, it's bombs?
Everybody loves bombs.
No! Not now! You should have told me that earlier!
I just learned the rotation system for these things.
Wait, you can rotate these?
Yeah, you can get parenthesis spins, whatever that's supposed to mean.
Oh, that's cool. That's cool.
Can I get a double with this?
I need to get to the bottom.
I need to get to the bottom too. I was like, what the... No one told me about this.
I just need to get. I don't know where.
I need to get. You need to get somewhere. That doesn't spin.
Ah!
Aww.
This is fine. This is fine. Play slowly and I'm fine.
I think this mode would be called splitting the atom.
Oh my god.
I just poofed. Yeah, it seems like a lot of, like, you know, crazy attacks happening. Crazy, I don't know.
Franken mode.
I think I thought too much about how to spin this.
Okay, my bullet state is no longer nice.
Someone should have told me there was bombs earlier. Then I wouldn't have stacked so high.
Well, I don't think any of us...
Hey, if you want, I can tell you there's bombs now, totally after the fact we've already told you too.
No, just preemptively say there's bombs every single time. Thanks, I didn't know. Thanks for telling me.
You're welcome.
Mid-bombs.
We're just looking out for you, though.
Oh wait, actually, if you know the spin, it's actually really useful. What? Um...
I think I done this one with a spin by accident.
Someone just nuked me. That's not very...
It's very dramatic.
Oh, I got another kill.
I'm dead.
Okay.
Oh, dementia is back to save us.
Hooray, dementia. Wait, hang on.
Abort, abort, abort.
No, it just topped you and you see aborted.
100 players left, alrighty.
Alright.
I'm kind of down with this one. Can I survive this?
Yes, you can.
Can, yes.
Turns out I cannot. Turns out I cannot. Okay.
Because you said something.
Like 80 is pretty good. Like 80 is pretty... Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing like a challenge thing. We're doing like a challenge thing and I don't know. It seems like people are... What is happening, by the way? What is going on? Like, what is this about dementia coming back?
Adwancho, I mean, I didn't see why he left, but he's the one running this whole thing.
Yeah, because he's an admin, he can run admin scripts and that's what they usually use for all the modes. Because they're really funny modes.
Did something happen? Like, is that why we're running this again?
Maybe internet had issues.
Oh, yeah, that could be the case.
And then we were like, that's probably it.
Yeah. Thankfully, no server dies.
Is that like a streamer voice call? Yeah, it's kind of like that. It's kind of like that.
No, maybe the server will die now. Hmm.
Dude, don't jinx it now.
Rip the server long live the server.
You're gonna see, like, the server is going on another three-hour maintenance.
Oh my.
This is season two start all over again?
Split square is just that? I don't know. I think split square is kind of fine. I feel like it's much better than the... Whatever the, like, other piece was. The brown piece? That was hell.
The boomerang?
Yeah, that one looks bad. That was bad.
The weird boomerang is hard.
Uh, the boomerang is still better than the seven-long eye piece.
Is it? I don't know. I feel like seven-long eye piece was better than the weird guy.
I feel like I couldn't get angry at the eye piece because it was just so silly.
Well, no, I'm not talking about the increasing size eye piece. I'm talking about the parenthesis eye pieces, I guess.
Wait, there's a parenthesis eye piece? What?
Yeah, from previous SSL.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. I wasn't at previous SSLs. This is... I don't know. It's pretty cool so far.
Oh, it says bombs. I shouldn't have just been abusing TSP minis.
Yeah, it's a lot of bomb.
Hey!
Wow!
Oh, let's go Coldlives.
Very cold.
Five and a half minutes, day. Hey, 71st, don't take that.
148.
150.
Oh no, goodbye.
Yo, I got the same number as my rank.
One more last game? One last game? One more?
Encore, encore.
Encore, 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 encore. Last game?
Oh, we're going last game. We're going last game! Oh, this is it. This is it.
Oh, the frames are not happy.
The hold is hot.
The hold is hot. Hold your heart.
Okay, I'm using it immediately because...
Yeah, I'm using it immediately also.
They're two types of people. Those who use it and those who don't.
I'm not playing no hold. No hold is like the bane of my existence.
You know, it's like saving items, right? It's like saving items and, you know, you never use them.
Who knows? I might need to use it in the immediate future.
Oh god, that's me. Except I just never end up using it. I just kill it.
That is in fact the joke.
Except I... And when it comes to Tetris, it's the exact opposite. Just get out of here. Oh.
Just use it or lose it, or...
Yeah.
Save it for later.
No, that's in the spin.
Hey, we got that peaceful music.
Yeah, the music is nice. It's...
Aww, oh well. There I go.
Dare send me trade.
Joel? Thank you for Joel.
That was very crazy. Keyboard sounds.
So much keyboard. Love the noises.
It's actually louder than the music, boy.
Oh, my back-to-back. Oh, my bullet state. Oh, everything.
Everything.
Oh, my everything.
Oh no.
Oh no, what the hell? I just got Delta 30 at once?
Ooh, yikes!
Oh, this is where I die.
Yep, that's another thirty!
No! Oh god, why am I, why am I being sent a hundred thousand vines?
Holy shit!
Alive, I'm alive!
My queue doesn't end, it doesn't end. I'm dead.
I got a KO! I took out skill issues. Now no one else is gonna have a skill issue.
Someone sent me like, three hundred vines.
Holy shit!
Or something, like I did not have an end. Let's see, who else is alive? There's another Gohan, why is there so many Gohan?
Oh, I got popular! What wants to be the next Gohan?
I wonder how you spectate someone and you switch to them before the board load, you just see the hearts?
I'm, I'm, I'm alive, hello, hello everyone?
Oh, Mad Kiwi's full lighting.
My heart!
Uh, be careful of Mad Kiwi, they're full lighting, he's got a hundred and seventy-five spike.
Oh no!
Oh my god!
Mad Kiwi's ultimate full wider.
That is bad news! That is very bad news!
Let's go, Baby's first explosives remains! Let's go, after this, Wiley's making out of Baby's first explosives lobby.
Ooh!
It's like last time, except, yeah.
Ah, I died, okay. Hello, I'm watching the streaming in shower, I see, thank you for shower. Watch out for those rip, ripping hot showers, perhaps? Eh, yeah, this is, this is, this, this has been cool! The ramp up is a little wild though! The ramp up is a little wild though, like, one line send is six now, what the fuck? What the fuck, like? It's pretty much, it's pretty much RNG and like, you know, Tetris ninety-nine skills, I see, it seems, like, you know, targeting? I think targeting matters a whole bunch! Right, I, I didn't realize, but I feel like targeting, realize.
Right?
Yeah.
So comfy!
Yeah! Comfy's good.
Can we just sit here and chill to it?
Wait, I just realized, is this not seven back?
Uh, no, Wiley decided to change their pairs.
Oh! I Oh, that's why! Oh!
Is it pairs or is it classic? Because I remember...
Uh, looks like pairs, because there's a lot of repeat, uh, wait, yeah, it's pairs.
During testing, I was thinking it was classic.
Maybe it's classic, I don't know. Mad Kiwi's too fast, I need to find a slower person. Gladon's too fast. Um, no, it, it, it looks like, uh, pairs, sort of, yeah. Because there's a lot of like, repeating pieces.
Perhaps they changed it.
I mean, Wiley loves classical, he also loves pairs, so it could be either of them.
Maybe listen to Wiley.
Booty chuck. I don't think anyone still has their heart piece anymore.
Aww!
I mean, I definitely don't, but I was also knocked out, so...
Help someone!
I mean, clear, clearly, the, the secret twitch should be, if you have the heart piece, you get like, plus two thousand percent attack or something.
God, that would be fantastic!
That'd be a crazy mod.
Yeah! You, 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 you lose it, you lose it or you, you, you use it, I don't know, something like...
You hold on to your heart until you don't.
Yep.
And then Undertale music starts playing.
Indeed, yeah, it gives, it straight up gives you like an extra life, yeah, sure.
You send five hundred lines, but everyone targets you.
Oh!
It's a boss battle mode.
Uh-oh. I'm glad I let that piece sink. See if you send more crap over.
Wait, you're still alive?
Ooh, they hold on!
This is gonna cool, cool watch.
What?
Nah.
Hot damn! He survived that! Some lackey miracle, oop! Oh, there we go.
Road to E-train full lighting, oh no, let's go Gohan!
Come on, Gohan, oh!
Aww!
GG!
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 What just happened there, like, what, huh?
I think Gohan just gave up.
Ah, I see.
Oh yeah, because Gohan already won, won, so they let Pong Pong win.
Woo!
Ah!
Nice!
Yeah, that's what I got us to make.
SSL four.
Yeah, this is, this has been, this has been cool, thank you, thank you, yeah, this is what is, 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 what is, what's the, what is the after show about, by the way? What is, what is this, what I've, I've heard of this?
There are some interviews. Yeah, if you go over to Wiley's stream, there are gonna be some interviews, uh, Wiley's gonna talk about a bunch of stuff. Probably gonna mention the store.
There we go.
Ah, there we go.
Ah, I see, I see. Yeah, this is, this has been, this has been pretty cool, thank you, thank you for, for the, the spot, it's been, it's been cool. I, I basically just kind of, like, I kind of just barged it, like, two hours.
Baby first explosive.
Two hours before the, before the event started, I, I, I thought it was Monday. This is
Oops!
Yeah, it's been quite chaotic, but also pretty fun.
I missed the last one because of that, I don't blame you.
Yeah.
I'll probably stay in for a couple baby explosives and then we'll probably wait out.
You're gonna stay for one too.
Explosive time, yep, explosive time!
I'm gonna stick around till I'm like, I'm hungry, I need...
Wait, this doesn't seem baby, this is not baby.
But do you ever get this is not baby explosive?
Wait, this is, this isn't baby?
This is Baby's second explosive!
I was promised babies.
Yeah, I was
This is just explosive!
I feel cheated!
I see no explosions.
I know, I think no babies!
There's not even explosives!
There's no explosives?
There's no babies and no explosions.
No baby, no explosives? This is just a game!
There's no explosions, I want my money back.
You mean, I have to play regular Tetris?
This is regular Tetris?
Yup!
Oh no!
You have to play Tetris! I don't wanna play Tetris!
I didn't start playing Tetris, I don't play Tetris.
I wanna have babies and explosives! I just killed Elephants!
Damn!
I literally just killed someone named Elephants.
I got killed by someone called, uh, Master Tofu.
Alright, I'm gonna head out.
Master Tofu, Ele-
Later, fellows.
See ya!
Alright, thanks for dropping by!
Wait, what do you mean, what do you mean we're playing regular Tetris? What's going on here? What is going on?
The year's twenty twenty-four, we're back to playing regular Tetris.
I want babies! This is not babies!
Yeah, this is not baby, is this gonna, is this, is this going to be aborted?
No, I think I'm just gonna run this through until the end. And then change the thing.
It is very major, if someone said I want baby, if like females say I want babies, that's when they run. But I don't think she's a bloody one.
Oh, I think there are certain interviews.
Oh, yeah, I think I'm gonna go, uh, look into those then.
Here, right out too.
Yeah, I, I died also.
Joel! Thanks for dropping by.
Thank you!
Four players remain.
Yo, did I just get twenty first? Did I just get twenty first? I gotta, man, maybe I'm better, maybe I'm better at normal Tetris, perhaps? Perhaps this is the case, yeah, we, we, I think, I think we finally see, like, uh, my, my, my actual video game without distractions. My act, what? This is, this has, this is proving, right? This is proving the fact that distractions actually work today. Distractions was a success today, I think. Right, you, you, you managed to, you managed to bring me down from twenty-one? Right, place twenty-one? To place like, I don't know, like, two hundred? We, you, you guys, you guys have succeeded, you guys have defeated me, I think, today. Today you guys have defeated me, I, 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 I am, I am fallen. I am fallen by your sword, I think. We, we will, we will meet to however, we will meet next time, I think, in, in, when, when circumstances like this arise again. It'll be, it'll be kinda fun. It'll be kinda fun, thank you, thank you for, thank you for hanging out, it's been, it's been, it's been quite cool. It's been quite cool, I am, I am, I am, yeah. Yeah, very, 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 yeah, it's We'll see, we'll see you guys on Monday, as always, you know, you know how it is, you know how it is with, with the, with the prod zone. You know how it is at the prod zone, we'll see you on Monday, uh, with actual content, with actual, like, normal, normal doings. Right, our, 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 our normal, natural, natural places we will return to. But yeah, this was cool, we will, we will see you later, thank you, ah! Yeah! Yeah, you, you, you guys, you guys wanna see the, see the, you guys wanna see the interview also? You guys wanna see the interview also? I mean, I mean, it's, it's I don't know, it's a lot of viewers though, it's a lot of viewers though. Oh yeah, oh yeah, 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 sure, we can, we can co-watch the viewers.
Can we get babies now?
Gotta get at least one or half.
Look at, look at the winner name, yeah, the winner, the winner name is something else. The winner name is something else, it's
I'll be disappointed if I don't have a baby!
Right?
Let's talk? What the fuck? What do you, what do you, what do you mean, it's, it's, it's normal game? Normal, uh, uh, okay, there's dementia talking? Dementia talking, we have, we have two hundred players, okay. No, it's the normal game! It's normal Tetris again! What the? What the cow? What the cow?
These are not babies!
Also, my, my game is lagging?
I don't, I want my babies!
Oh!
At least the music changed!
Truth! We got that goal for us. Ah! Here we go!
That's not babies!
It's chaos and I love it! Something.
Wait, why do I start from left? Why do I start, huh?
But why is the Y?
Bombs!
Uh, this is bomb, baby, uh-huh, okay, you want, I, I'm, I'm gonna just take it.
We got Baby's second explosive, how about that?
Yeah, that's Baby's second!
Why, why, why is my piece? Do you guys pieces start from the left too?
Yep!
What the?
It's like it's tilted without the tilting.
Oh my god!
It is, isn't it?
Get died tilting, that's what it is. I'll take that off clear, thank you very much. Is anybody else just waiting for the, uh, game mode to suddenly change? For the
Nope, I'm playing, I'm playing, how is it called? Quick play?
Going on that, going on that power, yeah.
Can I have that all clear? Like, not to send to me, but like, can I get that all clear?
Oh, I'm dead. My game pros, my game pros also, my game pros also as soon as I die, oh my god! Don't die!
Other players, oop!
Oh no! Oh, game crash!
Uh-oh. Oh, but that's back.
Oh my god, my frag went!
I got a KO, I'm working with this!
How do you do this?
Take it, now they're all clear. Milk and Mario Bros is dead.
Okay, so, so, everyone, everyone, okay, okay. Okay, okay, hold on, remove this up. Okay, so we are going to see the interviews, but apparently the, the guy who are, who is doing the interviews, they, they do not allow to raid at this time. They do not allow to raid at this time, it seems, I don't know what's going on.
Oh yeah.
Probably something to do with affiliate status.
Coming to me!
Probably something to do with affiliate status that, that we have. Uh, so, so, I don't, I don't know what we should do.
Oh, yep, there's a game crash for me.
Should we, should we, should we just go and do the thing, do the thing we always do? Some people just turn it off? No, it's, it's, it's not, it's not this, it's not this, cuz like
It is chugging!
It's not this, cuz like, uh, other people, other people, they raid. Other people, they raid, cuz like But, but also, hold on, hold on, what is, what is the, what is the possible?
But they, but the game is lagging so, like, crazy.
What is the possible, uh, settings that you can put it to?
Shuffle around.
Ray Wumbo? I, I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know the guy that much. It's It's, it, 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 would, would, would it, would it be, would it not be weird? I don't know, I don't, I don't know how, how, how it goes, I don't know how it goes. I, I don't, I don't underst- I don't understand a lot of this, a lot, a lot of this like Twitch, Twitch.
Somebody say, oh!
Uh, what do you, what do you call it, like Twitch? Etiquette? Cut a deal?
I don't know, I can't speak to it.
But yeah, what is this, what is
Oh, did it change?
One people on the circle is streaming, one people on the circle is streaming? Okay, where, where, where are we? Where are we? Oh, it's Basie, it's Basie, I mean, we raided Basie before, we raided Basie before, this is, this is
Somehow over that? Ninety-six! Oh, two hundred?
I mean, if, I mean, if we're going to, if you're going to, if you're, if you're, if we're, if we're, if we're going to raid somebody, right? If you're If we're, hold on, hold on, we, we gotta, we gotta close, we gotta close whatever, oh my god, okay, okay.
Now isn't it actually getting me Baby's first explosives?
Yeah, if we're going to raid, if we're going to raid anyone else, then, then I have, I have plenty of targets. I have plenty of targets, it's kinda wild, right? It's kinda wild streaming on other days. It's kinda wild streaming on other days, because, because there are like everyone, there are like everyone, it's kinda like
Reality is
I, I have never had this happen to me. I have never had this happen to me where, where I'm like, I'm like, I have multiple options? What the fuck? You guys have multiple options?
Not babies!
What the hell? We, we can, we, is this what weekend stream is like? Is this what weekend stream is like? God damn! God damn, what the fuck? What the fuck? I think, I think, I think this is it, right? I think this is it.
Did change last time.
Oh my god, I just got bombarded!
But yeah, thank you, thank you for, thank you for hanging out, thank you for hanging out, it's been, it's been quite good, it's been quite cool. Uh, we'll see you guys on Monday, where we are, we are going to do normal, normal scenarios happening now.